Let us bow in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, you're a King of the universe. You are sovereign over all things. We ask that we act in accordance with your will, that your name would be glorified, and that the choices we make will be honoring to you. Please grant us discernment as we make any and every decision so that we serve as many people as possible in the best way possible and do what is right above all else. Help us to love others. Please provide opportunities for us to take care of our neighbors and make this town, Nacogdoches, a better place to live here on earth. To you be the glory, in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Okay, we'll open the meeting. Let's say the pledge, please, first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me say one comment about the Pledge of Allegiance. Starting the next meeting, we will also say the allegiance to the Texas flag. It's where we live, so that's what we're gonna do. Okay, now then, we have a scheduling conflict with our attorney, and we're gonna have to move him up because he's gotta be, he has another client in about an hour. So pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.072, we will adjourn to executive session, and the time is 5:32, and we shouldn't be too long. So, thank you very much. Session, and we're returning from executive session at 5:48 PM. And pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.072, there's no action. So therefore, we will go into the regular agenda. And first item is open forum. We have one, do we have any more? We have one open forum.
Brandy Cartwright, 2806 North Pecan Street. I have addressed many city councils over the last nine years, and I'm here again to address this new council, to bring to you an issue that is important and should not be neglected any longer. As this new budget is being looked at, I hope you really consider the playground for McCrimmon Park. This playground has been forgotten by city leaders. Do you know what a park that is in disrepair says to a community? It says, "We don't care about you." It says, "We don't think you are worth investment." But this community is worth the investment. As a citizen who lives on the northwest side, it matters to me that my neighbors on the southeast side have a playground for their children. And I believe we should find the money to do this because city parks are vital to all our citizens. City parks encourage active lifestyles and reduce health costs. City parks strengthen local economies and create job opportunities. In Denver, which is a big city, but still, 1.2 million in federal park grants resulted in over 2.5 billion in local public and private investments. Imagine what 250,000 might do to Nacogdoches. City parks make cities more resilient. City parks increase community engagement and reduce crime. City parks are a tool for cities to achieve their equity goals. Now, I know many people in our city balk at words like equity, thinking that it's too woke, but the definition of equity is the quality of being fair and impartial. Have you been to McCrimmon Park? Go, walk around. Think about not having the car or gas money to drive to Maroni or Pecan Park. Think about needing to walk to a park and what it would feel like to walk there with your young kids and end up at McCrimmon. Think about how inequitable, unfair, and unjust it would feel to know that your neighborhood park has been in disrepair for decades. Our community and Mr. Bolden's ward deserve this investment. They have been waiting for decades. And I know you might be thinking, "Well, this is being discussed by the CNAC Committee for the bond election, but I don't think it can wait. I think that we should make it a priority." And I implore you, don't make our children today pay for the lack of planning and investment of past city leaders for one more year.
Thank you, Brandy. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda. Items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to remove item B from the consent agenda, please.
Item B is removed.
And I'll make a motion that we approve item A or the balance of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, you got the floor.
Mr. Inarm, City Manager.
I apologize, I have to change glasses because one works for the computer and one works so that I can actually see you.
Told you. I just wanted to pull this from consent. You and I have already talked about it, but could you just give us a rundown of what this process is and why we're doing it?
Right, so the charter says that the City Manager appoints the municipal court judge for a two-year period. The charter also says that department heads within the city have to have the consent of council. So you have to confirm those appointments for all those department heads. So Judge Watts has been our municipal court judge for four years. She was reappointed in 2021 in July, and so this is just a standard reappointment. The municipal court judge is a little different than normal city employees in that they, they're an officer of the court, and so it's appropriate that they be appointed for that two-year term unlike other employees who are at will.
That's all, thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the reappointment of Heather Watts as the municipal court judge for a two-year term.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the regular agenda. First item is A, consider approval of a contract buy in between the city of Nacogdoches and jury construction for the 2003 street paving project in a not-to-exceed amount of $1,363,581.35. Mr. Bartlett.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Steve Bartlett, Director of Public Works and City Engineer. Have tonight for your consideration a contract for our annual paving project that we do. And so we took bids on June the 8th for our 2023 street paving program. That bid, and I wanted to just take a second to explain some of the ad alts, it's a little confusing. So we bid a base level of streets, but we bid some alternate items that we would have the option of awarding, and we're gonna recommend to you tonight to award all them. But I wanted to explain that one of them was for paving in the cemeteries. And the reason that was an alternate item is because that takes a very small paving machine. Some of them have very large paving machines only, and they may or may not have been feasible for the particular bidder to do that, and what you would have seen is a very elevated price if we did that. So we wanted that as an option. We got a price that we were happy with, which was $36,192, and that was below our target budget. So that was ad alt one. We have ad alt two is where we can go in and just mix the streets and put them back down and put asphalt on, or we can mix the streets and put cement in there, which helps secure that base, or we can mix the streets and put fly ash in there. And both of those strengthen the streets, the chemical stabilization. Cement tends to help us crack streets, unfortunately, as it shrinks. So our preference is to do fly ash. Fly ash had been a little difficult to get and a little expensive, so we wanted the option of not necessarily having that as a delivered material. So we bid it. By going from the cement that was in the base bid to the fly ash, we were able to increase the contract amount by $14,504. You see a number of $72,000 there. That's because it also then deducts the cement item, so it's kind of some math going on. But the net increase to the contract was a little over $14,000 for that option. Case and I felt like that was very warranted and probably will give us a greater street life because they won't crack up quite as quickly from that stabilization. So and then lastly was to add a couple of concrete swales in streets. We've got old streets that were, the grades are terrible and we hold water. Each of your wards probably has a few of those. Some of our solutions are to make some concrete swales to get the water across the street that's still navigable and drivable, but those are kind of expensive little items to build. And so not all paving contractors are cost efficient with doing concrete stuff. We also wanted the option to not have that in the contract if we thought the pricing was high. So net result here is we think all three ad alts are things that we want to add to the contract. We did only have one bidder, although realize these contracts are fully advertised for 14 days. We opened on the 15th, they're advertised twice. We send it out to all paving contractors. Drury was the only one that was here. I will tell you, they've done many, many, many contracts for us, but this still doesn't mean we just award them. We actually had an engineer's budget that was just over 1.4 million, and they came in under that, so we're very comfortable with the pricing. And our pricing estimates are based on historical bid information as well. So I think Case did a really good job of getting close, and Drury came in right under him. It's perfectly where we like to be in this office. So we're pleased with the contractor, we're pleased with the price, we're pleased with the ad alts, and we're recommending all of those tonight to you for approval. Be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Okay, we have any public comment? There being none?
We're just real excited to see your streets.
There being none, okay, we'll talk, discuss it among the council. Okay, Steve, I got one question. Okay, is this money in the budget?
Yes, so this is a mixture of your street maintenance fee that's on everyone's water bill, and then also the regular fee that's in your CIP, $250,000 combined. And realize your maintenance fees, they don't go away. So if we don't use all of them in one year, they tend to grow. So yes, every bit of this is budgeted, every bit of these funds are available, and again, we're actually below the target budgets. If you look at the bottom of your agenda information sheet, and we split this up over these funds, because one of them is park improvements for the cemetery, and that's why we split it into three categories. But you'll see, we have the street maintenance fee, we have 1.326 million, excuse me, yeah, 1.326 million in there, we're spending 1.12 million of it. So we're still got some monies left for our next round of projects. And the same thing with the annual street rehab, we have 322,000 in that accrued account, and we're trying to spend about 197 of it. So we have to do this math, or Pam yells at me. But yes, the answer is it's all there, and we'll still have some funds left and hopefully do some more paving in the near future. And I do get bonus points for spradling.
Sure do.
I've been threatened to be killed several times or so.
We just want to know where in the schedule this spradling is.
I was gonna ask that question, you stole my thunder, Terry.
Well, Case and I talked, and there was no doubt that we were gonna tell everybody it is top of our list, and that's true, I'm not making a joke. So we're gonna ask them to do the spradling on Old Lufkin Road as the first part of this. It's in terrible shape, and it has been, and we know that. You know, we were hoping tech stat would be gone and out of there, and it's not even a complaint, it just hasn't happened that way. We were trying to keep this heavy traffic off of it, but at this point, we can't go any further. These folks can't go any further. And so if it gets a little bit torn up, we'll just have to go keep it repaired.
So I do want to add on and really use this as an opportunity to thank my constituents who have been here tonight for the Old Lufkin Road and spradling. But I particularly want to thank Jim for showing up tonight. The reason why Old Lufkin Road and spradling are in this contract is because he sent me a message and said, "People are losing their bumpers and their fenders in the road, and they're driving off of, into people's yards as opposed to driving on the street, it's so bad." He sent me that message, and I want to thank you, Steve, and Kerry Walker. The same day that he sent it, we were all out there looking at that street, and it's taken us four months now to get from testing the base and to a contract. But thank you and Case and the entire staff for getting this here and for making this a priority for the Southwest.
Absolutely. I like my life.
Any more discussion? Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Would you like to make that motion?
I would love to. Mayor, if there is no other comment, I would make a motion to approve a contract buy in between the city of Nacogdoches and jury reconstruction for the 2023 street paving project in a not-to-exceed amount of $1,363,581.35.
I'll sit, go ahead.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Okay. Next item is 6B, consider approval of an interlocal agreement between the city of Nacogdoches and the Nacogdoche Central Appraisal District for use of the city courtroom. Kiplinger.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Council. A few weeks ago, we had a little rain, and the result of that little rain was that a portion of the appraisal district was flooded in their office. Because of that, they're unable to hold their appraisal review board hearings. People are used to going there for their appraisal review board hearings, and so it made perfect sense that they use the municipal courtroom across the street, where if they walk into the appraisal district, they can just point them across the road. Judge Watts was amenable to working with Jason and his team on the schedule, and so we just have a simple interlocal agreement so that they can use that facility for these appraisal review board hearings. And I'll be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
We have any public comment? There being none, I'll open it up for discussion.
How are you all doing down there? What's in there? How much, there's a lot of damage, how much more time? Or do you want to speak to Jason?
You got any fleas?
Give us a little status report, if you don't mind.
Got any fleas yet?
No, sir. Flea free.
So this happened about a month ago, right at a month. We have board of directors, it's their decision. Y'all elect those board of directors. A week from now is when they will get their preliminary estimates back from an architect to see what the cost of repairing this building is and what their other options might be. So a week from now, they will start making those decisions and start moving forward with something. At this point, we haven't done anything other than the water restoration, and yes, we have a lot of missing walls, but we're still functioning and getting by, getting the job done the best we can. The next step is to do these appraisal review board hearings, let those property owners be heard. And so we really need to get this going. City finance, they really want numbers from us, and this is the next step that's gotta happen. And that goes along with everybody else, accounting, schools all need their numbers too. So we need to move forward as quickly as possible, and this seems like a great fit if this works for y'all.
Thank you for the update.
Jason, can we get ours first? I think Pam would be happy. I'm just asking.
They all come together at the same time.
That's what I was afraid of, thank you.
Okay. Need a motion?
So I'll make the motion to approve the interlocal agreement as stated in item 6B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Last item on the agenda is receive presentation and give staff direction related to the year 2023-2024 budget.
Mayor and Council, this is the most exciting time of year for city staff. We just love it. We've got department heads and directors that have worked the last four months, putting some budget stuff together. One of the things I want to talk about briefly, though, is that because of the nature of government, budgeting is particularly difficult. We're trying to forecast what's gonna happen 18 months from now. That's very difficult to do. The other thing is that we back into a budget in a very odd way. We prepare all of the expenditure side way before we find out how much money we're gonna have. At my house, my budget is predicated on, I take a revenue estimate, I know how much money I'm gonna make, and then I figure out how much I can afford for a house note and for a car and for groceries and for whatever. So we really do budgeting in exactly the opposite way than probably most people think of doing a budget for personal finance. And so it does create some real challenges. This year, today, what I'd kind of like to talk about is in generalities about your philosophy about the budget, particularly with regard to personnel items. But I'd like us to kind of coalesce around the number of meetings and workshops you'd like to have, and also the schedule for those meetings and workshops. So August 1st is a real bellwether day. We are required to have you a budget presented by that date, so that's the day that we need to back everything off of. We can add as many meetings as you would like to this, or we can subtract. So we will have you the first draft of the budget by August 1st, which really means that we need to have some direction from council with regard to programming, particularly personnel and capital items, those big-ticket purchases. We need some kind of direction by July 18th. And so we have plenty of time to get that done, and we can talk about this as much as we need to. You also, after we present that proposed budget, the proposed tax rate vote needs to happen by August 15th. So all of this being said, our certified estimate from the appraisal district is due by July 25th. And so we don't really know, we don't have a good handle on how much money, how much revenue we're gonna have until we're well into the budget process. But you do have a lot of time to maneuver that budget before it has to be actually and finally adopted for the next fiscal year. So that's sort of the time schedule. We can come back to that, or we can have a conversation about this now? Whichever you prefer.
So August 1st is not enough time to see the first draft of the budget where everything fits together. Now, I know we don't have the income, but if we can even just have something where we see everything together, even if it's based on last year's income and we know where we're gonna adjust it or whatever, I would prefer a first draft by July 18th if that's at all. Pam's shaking her. So here's the problem, if we, I know we're required to get the first draft August 1st, but if we, that doesn't give us much time if there's some item that, like there was last year, that, you know, we had almost $2 million out of the reserve budget put towards personnel, and it doesn't give any time to adjust. So we really need some time to discuss to see what's gonna happen if we're within, if something, if we have to do something else to the budget. So, oh yeah, come on, come on, please, help me out here. Anything we can have, it doesn't have to be the whole budget.
No, no, no. Unfortunately, that is just, I mean, we are still in the very early stages of compiling all this, but the first draft on August the 1st, we are not actually gonna ask you to adopt that budget until September the 5th. And so we've got a month, and we can push that, we can actually do, instead of September 5th and the 12th for the budget and the tax rate, we could do 12th and the 19th, because we have three meetings scheduled right now for September. So we could push that even if we needed to. But between August the 1st, and let's just say we're able to do it September the 5th, that's how much time you've got to make any changes to that budget. We do not have meetings scheduled for August the 22nd or the 29th, but we can definitely do that if we want to add some more workshops after you see the August the 1st budget, which is going to show you a real picture of where we are. We're gonna have also on the 15th, we're gonna bring to you the proposed tax rate. Remember, that is not the tax rate you're setting, that is the maximum tax rate. So we always can just put it up here, and then y'all can adopt something later on, smaller, but that night, we can talk about it, we can call a meeting anytime between the 15th and September the 5th, we can call two meetings, we can call five meetings if we need to. We've got time for that. Unfortunately, there's just no physical way to get a budget to you prior to August the 1st that means anything, because it's really not gonna mean anything. I can give you numbers today, it means nothing. So I think you're gonna see, especially if we decide that we want to do a couple of extra workshops at the end of August, you're gonna have lots of time to discuss this before we actually ask y'all to adopt in September.
Let me ask you something.
Well, I was just gonna, yeah, you can come back to me.
Okay. How realistic is that July 25th date from the Central Appraisal District?
So that's state law, and that is something that Jason and I, every year, we get down to the bottom line. Unfortunately, he'll still be in the middle of the ARB appeals hearing process, and so we'll get a certified estimate. We will not have the real, the final numbers there, but he will certify a number for us to use on July the 25th. Now, the actual calculated tax rates we're gonna bring to you on August the 1st, unless we have to call a special meeting, because state law requires that I present those calculated rates to you no later than Monday, August the, what did I tell you, 7th. So we can't even wait till the next Tuesday. So if I don't have the calculated rates from the appraisal district by August the 1st, then we'll have to call a special meeting, because I have to present that to you no later than Monday, August the 7th. And so, yeah, that's kind of the thing, is they've got a lot going on over there, too, but we have state law that says these are our deadlines. And so we'll, Jason and I, we spent a lot of time on the phone that last week of July and the first week of August, making sure that we get it together.
Well, if we have to have a meeting every night, I'm okay with it.
And at the end of the day, that's what we can do. I mean, we can call special meetings if we have to. I think you're gonna have plenty of time between August the 1st and whichever day in September we choose to adopt the budget. It's just a matter of y'all calling those meetings, and we can meet as much as we need to.
Okay, I have one more question, and this may be out of place right now. Okay, Keith and I talked about this. Okay. Back during COVID, we received, I think, $8.2 million.
The ARPA monies.
ARPA money, okay. All right. I know that with, when the debt ceiling talk was going on between the White House, Congress, Senate, and everything, part of that negotiation was clawing back that $8.2 million, okay? It ended up not happening. Okay. How much of that $8.2 million have we spent?
As far as I know, we have done the demolition of the parks' restrooms that were in really, really bad shape for $14,000. And the engineering work, and that's all we've done so far.
Okay, so we got?
We got all of that still there.
8.1 million, okay. All right, well, the way I understand it, that plan is good through 2025?
We have until the December of '26, I believe, to actually complete the projects.
Okay.
Yeah. We have to tell them how we're gonna do it by a certain date, and then we actually have to spend it by a certain date.
Okay. Do we have anything on the drawing board?
I would have to defer to Mr. Bartlett on that.
That's a lot of money. And I don't want to give it back to Washington.
No, so Mayor and Council, and I know when we went through this, some of you weren't there, and so I probably need to refresh you with some of the information that your other council, co-council members have seen. But the answer is yes, so a significant amount of this is already designed, shovel-ready, and so we literally have contracts underway. We, in fact, I sent one today, and so, and some of the projects still need some design. So we contracted for that today, as a matter of fact, on some drainage things. So the answer is yes to both. We're ready to probably get some bids together on some sanitary sewer stuff and some water stuff and some drainage stuff, and then we're gonna design some more as well.
So most of that $8.1 million is gonna be used in drainage?
So it was, and I apologize, I didn't have it in front of me, but we have some water, sewer, storm drains, park materials. I think that was it, Pam, am I remembering right, y'all? Over there, I think that was it. And fire station, some fire station.
Yeah, the fire station, the additional renovations.
Yeah. Some minor renovations, not the big stuff.
Have you already spent the money on the parks? Have we done all we're gonna do on that? Brandon, you did?
Yeah, Brian can.
I'm probably getting into a whole different deal, we can wait on this, but I want that money spent.
Yes, Mayor, so the demolition has taken place, and we, Drew, purchasing agent, just sent a bid packet for the renovation of the restrooms at Lake Nacogdoches, so that'll be out, and bids open, I think, in three weeks. So we haven't spent it, but the contract is ready to go out to advertise for bids.
Okay. All right. Okay, I'm done with that.
I'm gonna follow up on my question. So first of all, I really think the process that you both have begun this year of having cross-departmental discussions about the budget is really a positive move. It's great, I hope it has some really good outcomes for, you know, what we need, and also where we might be able to save some dollars and help out across. and also where we might be able to save some dollars and, and help out across the city. So, I, I'm really positive about that. My concern with the dates wasn't so much about how many times, but, but if you have the time to readjust the budget, and also if there are any surprises. So, I'm, I really am hoping if you will see something that you think is a huge deal, if you would come and tell us ahead of time.
Yeah.
And say, be prepared, because this is something that we really are going to add this year that we didn't add last year. And, and this is, and this is where we're gonna get the funds, where we think we do.
And so, so a lot of, of what we're gonna ask, I think Keith mentioned, on July eighteenth is some direction on what you're gonna see tonight, on next July the eleventh, when we discuss capital and any new programs. By July the eighteenth, we just need some direction from y'all on what you want me to build into that budget. The August the first budget is the big lift, okay? So, if I can get the initial budget built, changing it is not as significant. This is the hard part. This is the time-consuming part. And so, getting to August the first, now, I'm gonna tell you, it's, it's around the clock till August the first. But after that point, the changes are not as significant. It's not like starting all over, okay? So, this is the big, that's why I say it's physically impossible to get it to you before then. After then, we can tweak numbers. If, let's just, let's just say you wanna do a one percent change instead of a two percent change. That is a, and, and I just rekey the numbers, and it's not a big deal. So, changing after August the first, although it takes time, it doesn't take as much time as, as what we're doing within the process of June and July. That makes sense?
How many times did, did you do that last year?
Every year, it's multiple times. It really is. It, it, it's lots, it's lots of change. And what, what you'll see on August the first is not going to be what you're going to adopt September the fifth. It's gonna be very close, but there are gonna be things that, as we had those discussions, that's why I think it's very important, if y'all can give us as much direction as possible prior to that, great. But if, if, if you don't get those decisions, we can still make changes. We can make changes up to the day that y'all adopt the budget, it just makes it a little more difficult. But like I said, you can still do it, it's just, the earlier we get some decisions and some direction, the better it is to actually give you something that means. What we don't want to do is to give you a, a budget on August the first that is nowhere close to what you're gonna adopt. We want it to be as close as possible, and then only have those big items that we want to change. That's why we spend a lot of time on this first one, to make sure it's really good, and then we can tweak it. That makes sense?
And I will say, I would rather have another meeting, two meetings, whatever, than all of a sudden have something that was like, whoa.
Not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Kathleen, I, I said when I took this office, I'm not afraid to work. And if, if we have to do it to where everybody's satisfied, even the community, we can meet every night. I don't, Jen can just line them up.
So, the eight million that you were talking about, it's already all spoken for and gone?
It's not gone, it's, it's.
It's allocated. It's allocated.
Yeah.
Um, does not mean that budget amendments cannot happen to move monies. It, it, it was, it was allocated by a budget amendment.
Do we have a voice in that coming up?
That, that is one hundred percent your voice. Y'all will be the ones that will allocate it. If you are not, we will, we will send you what those allocations are currently, what was budgeted.
That'd be great if we can see them.
Well, you make a note of that for me, the ARPA monies budget. But yes, that, that, I mean, you know, that's, that's gonna bring in Bartlet, 'cause he's gonna have, like he said, he's got these projects ready to roll. If we're, if we're already in the construction phase, we don't wanna go back and say, oh, no, we can't. But we can let you know where we are on, on the ones that aren't. And, and we've already come back and did, I think, one budget amendment from the initial split of ARPA. We decided we needed more money in sewer or something, I forgot what it was. And so, that's kind of an evolving thing where we, where we see needs, and we, we know we have that money. And so, if a need comes up and there's not a way to fund it, then we'll come to you and say, hey, this is a, a legitimate use of the ARPA funds. Do you, you know, do you wanna move it from, let's say, water to drainage or whatever? So, that's, that's a possibility.
And how does that fit with the capital needs committee that's going on right now?
So, so those, the capital needs committees are looking at projects that are not included in the ARPA funds. Those funds are already budgeted and ready to roll. What they're looking at is those projects that don't have funding. So, there's that two hundred million dollars that do not have current funding. This eight million has the funding, is split, and we'll, and we'll send that to you, but those are not included in that as they are already funded. That makes sense? Thing else?
In likely July eleventh, we will have a transfer of funds, a budget amendment for some of those ARPA dollars to move money from water projects to drainage problems, projects that have bubbled to the top, if you will. And so, Mr. Bartlet is working on, on some cost estimates and trying to get, get a design in place to do some of those drainage projects that we know are mission critical right now. So, we are gonna ask to move some of that money from the pots that we currently are holding it in, from one pot to another, but on eligible projects, and I think that's July eleventh. We should be on track for that, so.
And Jen, you'll send us a list of the, that, those projects, right?
The ARPA money project? I'm, I'm gonna email Pam, and she's gonna send it to you.
We'll, we'll get you, the last council approved those, and we'll, we'll make sure y'all have those.
Okay.
So, as we've worked with Bonita and, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Do have a question, just not on the timeline. Primarily up until July twenty-fifth and then the first of August, we're going to be talking in principles on the expenditure side, right? We're gonna talk about what our expected outlay is going to be next year. And then, when we get the budget, that, that's going to, where we have estimates of revenue.
Should, it should bring it into focus. And so, when we talk about, when we talk about city finances, those capital projects, you know, paving a street or buying a dump truck are material to our budget, and, 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 and they make a big deal. And so, so, when we talk about the philosophy about what kind of, what are those requests that have come in from the departments? And what are those big projects that are really truly, that any one of them is a big puzzle piece? We wanna get you that, and that'll be at the next meeting. Anything that we do with personnel is material to the budget. Anytime you talk about giving a one percent cost of living adjustment, or, or reclassifying employees, or adding staff, those are always big number items. And so, so what we did was kind of break those two big, big-ticket items down, and talk in, in, again, the thirty thousand-foot view tonight and on the eleventh. And then, we'll be able to bring you some really specific things. So, if you said, hey, we don't wanna buy any dump trucks next year, that's okay. We're gonna, we'll, we'll, we'll add a little to the vehicle maintenance budget, and we won't add dump trucks. And so, we can make some of those early modifications. We are still going through with the direct department directors what their budget requests are. And they have, they have all asked for the things that they believe they need to effectively and efficiently do their jobs and perform their function. And as we go through those, they're, they're gonna, some of them are gonna be cut, because frankly, we're not gonna have enough revenue to support all of the programs and projects that we all think would be great, but we just can't afford everything. And so, we have to be good stewards of that money. So, the budget that you get, though, will be where it comes into a little clearer focus.
Okay, thank you.
So, tonight, what, well, I wanted to talk about primarily, and again, at thirty thousand feet, but talk about priorities and challenges with regard to personnel, with regard to staffing. We're still having some challenges recruiting employees, particularly in very specific areas. We're struggling to recruit dispatchers and police officers. We're struggling to recruit civil engineers, because frankly, our pay scale has fallen behind what civil engineers get paid in Texas. We are, we are not bleeding employees, but we do have concerns about retaining quality employees. Once you get them here and get them trained and get them a year on the ground, regardless of what job they're in, they're much more valuable to us than, than a brand-new employee, so, so keeping our employees is important. Maintaining competitive pay, we see, is something that we need to, we need to at least, you know, keep up with the market as best we can. And then, obviously, the price of eggs is lower than it was six months ago, but it's still not what it was before COVID. And all of our employees across the board are feeling that, just like all of our citizens are feeling that. And so, so trying to balance these priorities and challenges that we have as a corporation, as an, an organization, with the needs of the community is what we're gonna try to do going through the budget. And we'd like a little bit of, just to give you a little bit of information so that you can, can start thinking about what your philosophy as a council is, to come back to us and say, this is where, this is where we are, or this is where I am as an individual. We're looking at cost of living adjustments at, at competing entities, the people that we look at to, to help us hire, or that we, you know, try to recruit people from. The current inflation rate and the unemployment rate, which remains really low, which makes a, a tight market out there for, for us. And thank you, Bonita, for putting that slide together. And I'm not gonna read it unless you need me to, but. So, taking a look at the personnel budget, when I say anything we do in personnel is material to our budget, it's because in general funds, seventy-six percent of our money goes to people. In the utility, sanitation, and airport funds, it's a lesser amount. The airport fund, for example, the massive, biggest part of the budget goes to gas. It goes to buying fuel that we turn around and sell. And so, people is a very small part of the airport. But when we, when we do something that affects those employees, we have twenty-seven million dollars in payroll annually across our funds. So, we, we put together, Pam and, and Bonita, and several of the directors sat down and had some conversations about, about what, what could, what could some options be with regard to, to our employees? And so, currently, the minimum wage at the city, the lowest wage we have at the city is thirteen dollars and forty-six cents an hour. That is, that is a large group of employees that are, that are at that, at that bottom, the bottom of our, of our pay platform. When we took a look at, at our pay plan and the pay grades, we found that a little over fifty-three percent of our employees fell below an empty grade. So, we have an empty, so we have a pay plan, and it has a grade system. And about fifty or fifty-three percent of our employees fell below a grade that doesn't have any employees in it. It's just a, it's just a vacant spot. So, if you imagine you have a, a list from grade one down to grade thirty, then, then there's a, there's a grade step in there that just doesn't have a, an employee, because nobody really fit there. One of the things that we talked about was collapsing that grade and moving everybody up that was below that, that particular grade. It was kind of a clean way to do it, which would take the bottom, the lower-paid fifty-some percent of our employees and move them up effectively five percent. Those are the employees that, that spend the bulk of their money on milk and eggs and groceries and gas and those things. And so, so that's one idea of, of a way that we could do this. When we look at, when we look at what that looks like on the next page, we'll, I'll give you the more detail of what that would cost. One of the things we've talked about is a cost of living adjustment. Those are pretty typical, one or two or three percent. We did not do a cost of living adjustment last year, because we did these four-time retention payment things. I would not recommend doing that again. I think a cost of living adjustment or, or going with this increasing the minimum wage kind of plan, or some combination of, of that, would be appropriate. Also, in personnel, because the police department has been chronically short of officers, we had, in years past, budgeted for those officers that we never hired. At some point, it was, the decision was made, let's don't budget for them, and if we ever get back close to full, we'll come to a budget amendment mid-year so that we can hire those officers back. And so, we still have more than three vacancies at the police department. But we wanna have a conversation about refunding those and putting that fund in the budget, not mid-year, but going ahead and building it into the budget, because Chief Williams has assured me he's gonna fill up. And Joe, and Sergeant Pitts wants that to happen. So, another thing with regard to personnel, oh, this is, this is jumping across. The increasing the minimum wage is really everything lower than that grade twenty-four in our pay chart. And so, it would move all of that bottom half, effectively, half of the employees up. It would affect a hundred ninety-one employees. The estimated cost to do that would be three hundred ninety thousand dollars for the fiscal year. So, that would, that would, that would capture, again, that, that, you know, fifty-whatever percent, and it would move them up. This is just one idea. This is, you know, certainly, we're, this is your decision. We're just trying to, trying to come up with some ideas that make sense to us and that you can chew on. Another option on the top half of this is a, a COLA for employees grade twenty-four and above. So, the employees above that, that grade gap, a COLA, and that, you can see what, a one percent COLA for that employee group, a two percent or a three percent. And so, if we decided not to go with the increasing the minimum wage and moving those bottom positions all up, then we do, and you wanted to look at a COLA for all of the employees. Now, this is across, again, all four of those funds. A one percent COLA across the city would cost two hundred twelve thousand dollars. So, for every one percent, that's, that's the number we're at. So, there's a lot of options. There's some, you know, you can do nothing. We could do a COLA at whatever percentage, a cost of living adjustment at whatever, whatever you think is appropriate. But we wanted to go ahead and give you some idea of what those numbers are, and what that, what that would cost, and what that impact would be.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is that if, if we can afford it, that we, that we raise the bottom fifty-plus percent of employees by five percent, and that we give some level of a cost of living adjustment to those employees above grade twenty-four that are not affected by that collapse. It's a very, in our pay system, it's a very clean way to do it. It does cause a little bit of job compression or salary compression, but it's not significant, and so.
At the bottom fifty, raise it what?
So, so by collapsing that group, we would, it would be a five percent increase for that, for the lowest paid fifty. And I keep saying fifty, but it's fifty-three, fifty-four percent of our, a hundred ninety-one employees. And we have about two hundred twenty or so at any given time, so.
Okay, and then the other option along with that is what?
Would be a cost of living adjustment, which is at the top of this screen, for employees grade twenty-four and above, so that those employees would get a cost of living adjustment that you think is appropriate, based on, and based on what we can afford. Obviously, we, we work on a budget. We're talking about the budget, but, you know, we do have, there is a limit to what we can afford and what's appropriate. But because we did not give a cost of living adjustment last year, and the, and the cost of living has certainly increased over the last two years, I do think it's appropriate, and I do think we'll recommend something.
I thought they gave a lot of different raises over the last two years, didn't they? Retention payments and raises and cost of living things?
There, well, what you saw before, those quarterly payments, that's one of them. And also, we did implement.
The STEP program for public safety.
For both the firemen and for the police officers, correct?
So, this, this is really reaching out to those non-public safety employees. Those employees are in the STEP system already?
So, so my question is, I would love to give everybody a huge raise. I mean, it's just, and, and then the question is, can we afford it? And the other part is, how does that impact service delivery? So, last year, we were given a, a chart that showed the employees that we could not retain. And I know CDL drivers were in there, and so, I, I'd like to see, I, I'd just like some opinions about which are the employees that we really need to raise the base in order to have, you know, garbage truck, you know, garbage pickup. And so, that's where I would want to start, is what do we have to do to get the employees we need? If we, if we need to, and I'm, I'm all for having the three police positions opened up and, and hire them. And particularly, I, I get a lot of complaints about traffic and about people speeding through on Park Street. And I know you've addressed that in, in some ways, but some of the traffic violations hopefully would bring in a little bit of income. But anyway, I'd like to see those particular positions, and then see what kinds of funds we have, you know, to, to do, to address the other things. I mean, I certainly believe in cost of living adjustments, but I also believe that we have to have garbage delivery, I mean, pickup.
Absolutely. That's why we're here tonight, is to get that feedback. Exact, that's exactly what we need so that we can make sure that we arm you with all the information you need to make a good decision. And so, that, that's very helpful to hear that, that that'll help you with your decision tree. And Bonita and, and her team should be able to put that together, just like they did last year, and.
And, and maybe, so, I know last year, we didn't get it by levels. We got it by department. So, I don't know if we're losing a lot of, of, of employees or we're not able to recruit and retain employees under grade twenty-four. So, that's one of my questions, is, you know, if we, if we're, if our turnover is every six months for every employee under grade twenty-four, that makes a huge difference to me. We obviously, it costs us more money than giving the cost of living increase. So, I think that.
This is a pretty simple question. I would love to find out, what's the average pay of those? Well, I would love to find out what's the average pay of the, those, of that bottom level that doesn't, is not listed in comparison to the average pay of people in Nacogdoches? Just so we can see.
Okay.
Kinda, how, how well or how bad we're living.
Absolutely, we can put that together.
Census data has that, there is, it, you can, we can pull that from the census, too.
Absolutely, we can get you that. So, moving on to the next slide, this is, uh, the funding, the three frozen police officers would be two hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred in our budget. And right now, again, we, we're not, we're not there yet with putting it together. But as I stand here right now, my recommendation is gonna be that we fully fund those positions and encourage Scott to, to, to get them hired, so.
I, I keep thinking of these poor police officers who are frozen, you know?
Poor frozen police officers.
Under the degree weather. Yeah. How many are we down now? How many police are we down now? Cause I, last time I heard it was twelve, but now that's changed? Your, your money's on eight, okay.
Okay. Insider information. Scott Williams, Chief of Police, Mayor, City Council Members. So, I told, uh, Councilmember Huckabee today, we had a meeting, and we were eight down. We have a lot of new prospects, but we've come a long way since we were fourteen or fifteen down, so. I did talk to Interment City Manager Kiplinger about unfreezing. I don't wanna get to the point to where I've got prospects, but no job available. So, I, I think we're on the road to recovery and I would like to see that unfrozen and, and be able to, to go forward and not be hindered by, by this, so. But like I told, uh, Councilmember Huckabee, we've got one coming in from, uh, Los Angeles County. He's a deputy there, wants to come back to America. And we got, we got a guy that used to be a dispatcher here in, in the city, and he moved to Marshall. He got on at, at the PD. He's been there for a little over two years. I contacted him the other day, or actually, I talked to his dad, and I said, uh, tell him to give me a call, we got a spot for him. And so, he did, he's ready to come home, and he's bringing his wife back, too. We just, uh, did a PT test, written test for eight applicants to go to the academy. Five of those passed. They're going to interview the twenty-seventh, along with that LA deputy and the Marshall guy. And so, they pass, we're gonna pick the best out of the five and send them to the academy in August. So, there's a lot of prospects on the horizon, again. He and I both agree, we don't wanna be hindered a- and have to do this in a hurry. So, we wanna have the, the, your permission to get these unfrozen so we move forward.
Will that help you, Scott? Will that get you flush? I mean, would...
That'll get us back to sixty-five sworn, i- if everything works out, right?
Okay, and that'll be in the budget?
So, and, and what's, what's the turnover right now? Because that, in, in, you know, influences my decision if we, you know, how we need to keep police officers, I really...
It's getting better. We did have a, at least one retirement, and we had a fifteen-year officer who, uh, he already had a lawn care business and he bought out another person. And that business was so big, it couldn't work, but he wanted to stay. We tried to help him, uh, get a manager for that outside business, and we just couldn't do it in time because he, he, he had to commit, summertime was coming. And so, uh, he wanted to stay, we wanted him to stay. And if he gets the chance to get a manager, hard to find those two for a lawn care business. Maybe he'll come back, so. And we also have one coming from, looking from another local agency that used to work here that wants to come back, but that's, I gotta keep that to myself.
I don't have facts and figures, but it feels to me like there's more police on the streets right now. I see them more on North Street and stuff, and I just want you to know, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for...
Change in the weather, something's going on.
Yep, definitely something's going on. The culture has changed and, and we're moving in a positive direction.
Good, thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Keith, how much would that, how, how, how much dollar figure would that be, raising that bottom fifty, the five percent?
Three hundred ninety thousand. I, I wanna, let me circle back to the police department. I, I, since, since I've, um, taken this temporary role, I think my first day, I assured Chief Williams that if he got full, we would be in here at the next meeting with a budget amendment, asking you to free up those three. That was his request and I, and that's my commitment. So, if he fills up in the next two weeks, expect to see on the July eleventh a budget amendment to give him the money he needs to get back to full staff. Cause that's a, that's absolutely essential, so, we'll find the money.
That's a lot of swearing in. I might have to start baking.
Okay, go to, go to that, uh, screen on the COLA. Okay, what's your recommendation here?
I, I don't have one at this point. We, we're looking, trying to, we're trying to take a look at what everybody else is doing. We wanna see what the county does, uh, with, they're in the same budget process we are. We also wanna make sure that we take a look at what Lufkin's doing, um, to make sure that, because a lot of these employees are pretty portable. If you're a ti- a, a Class B wastewater operator, you can work here or Lufkin. And if Lufkin's paying them six dollars an hour more than we are, where are you gonna work? Uh, and that's just the reality of things. So, so we need to take a look at that, and I'm gonna really lean on Bonita to give us a recommendation on a cost of living adjustment based on her analysis because that's, she's the, uh, HR professional. Right now, I think that we're gonna have to deal with that based on what we can afford to do. I, I just really do, so, I'm not ready to jump out there quite yet.
Do you have all the direction you need from us?
Unless you have, uh, have other guidance you wanna, wanna throw at me tonight?
I just wanna, to jump in on this, the discussion of, of compressing the salary scale and, and COLAs. We, we did what I think is a pretty big thing last year with the, with the public safety employees, and I think that was absolutely essential. But now, we're at the point where we have to, we have to come back and, and look at those employees that weren't in those, those categories that we talked about last year, the, the truck drivers and, and those things, and because those employees are important to us, too. And so, if there's a, a cost-effective way for us to do that, I mean, we, we're not getting a raise up here, we get zero dollars. I, but I feel the same pain that they feel in the grocery store and at the gas pump. So, we need to do everything that we can reasonably, uh, to take care of our employees at all levels.
And so, sort of staff level, we are working on a, a, a more of a surgical approach to do some reclassifications of employees. Obviously, our dispatchers weren't initially included in the STEP program and, and largely, they got left behind. And so, what, one of the things that we're doing is kind of reclassifying those people to, to really the jobs they're actually doing and taking a look at that, and we're gonna recommend that to you. Uh, there's a number of, of, a number of positions across the city that, that, that we're looking to, to do that with, and that'll be coming before you in the coming weeks with a recommendation, um, that's affordable and solves some of those problems.
I, I don't wanna to get ahead of ourselves because we're certainly just talking about employees here. But if we're talking about a, a no new revenue, if that's the place we get, because we've got all of the other considerations that are coming, certainly, we've gotta discuss the, the cost of materials and supplies as compared to when we were in this process last year. But are, right now, are you thinking of lines of service that we're going to have to consider cutting? What, where are you on that?
So, so no, I don't think we're gonna have to cut lines of service. I think we've seen, um, I think we've seen nice sales tax growth this year, which I keep thinking it's gonna, gonna stop, but, um, we're not flush with bunny because of sales tax. But I think that largely, uh, if we, if we budget for some of the increase that we've seen this year in our sales tax, I think we can afford to do something with regard to employee salaries. I don't think we're gonna be in a bad place with our partially self-insured health insurance plan. And we'll know a little more after we have our next quarterly meeting, which is coming up with our, with our insurance folks. But it looks like we're in a good place with regard to that. The changes that you made last night, or last week, uh, with the, uh, smoking cessation program and also the, uh, also the mandatory physical should, should help us with long-term costs. Those aren't gonna be, we're not gonna see those in a week or a month. And for the first two or three years, it may cost us money, but in ten years, it's gonna be saving us money, so.
This is off the subject, but do we bid insurance or is it just, or do we self-insure ourselves?
So, so we use, uh, we use a local insurance broker, uh, at Cadence Insurance, Jeff Summers. And Jeff goes out onto the market periodically and bids our insurance package. So, Blue Cross Blue Shield administers our insurance program, but we're what's called partially self-insured. So, there is an individual stop loss that we are reinsured for, and there's a, there's a corporate stop loss that we're reinsured for. So, when an employee goes to the doctor and, and, and the doctor bills their health insurance, the bill goes to Blue Cross, and once a month, Blue Cross sends us a, a bill, and we write them a check out of our fund. If it goes, if the employee, and I believe it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year per employee, if an employee blows through that, has a major procedure that, that it can do that, then we're, we're one hundred percent insured beyond that, so we have a stop loss. And then again, organizationally, we have a stop loss that, that our total out-of-pocket amount for the city can't exceed. So, what we do is annually in the budget, the city council funds, sets aside funds, set aside funds based on every employee. And if employees want spouses and families, they contribute to that. And that fund, that goes into an insurance fund that, that Pam maintains, uh, that's here at the city. So, we do periodically go out. They looked at, um, uh, Blue Cross and United Healthcare. I believe bid on our, our administration and reinsurance last time, and the best, the best option for us was to stay with Blue Cross.
Okay, so there's already no need to, to bid it?
So, we, we do, we do bid it, but we have, we have an insurance broker that, that, that I'm very comfortable with and that provide, they're here and they provide a high level of service. They're very transparent, um, and they go out on the marketplace for us and bid it. Now, are there other options? Sure, um, we can certainly, you look at those other options, but I'm very comfortable with the expertise, um, of, it, it, it used to be Bancorp South and now it's Cadence, but, uh, their insurance arm.
Used to be Joe Max Green.
It used to be Joe Max Green. And now it's Jeff Summers, and if we have a problem, I can get my hands on him, you know?
Okay, just a question.
Anything else for me?
I had one other question. I know, um, we outsource quite a bit. I'd be very interested, you know, like in engineering and... So, um, if it, if we're not paying enough in, for example, for an engineer and yet it costs us twice as much to outsource it, that's information that I'd like to have. You know, if we need to bite the bullet and pay much more, um, and, and you all have that information, but that would be helpful to me.
When you say you all, you're looking at somebody behind me, clearly.
I'm looking at, uh, actually, several of you behind you, cause Pam sees it and, right, Mr. Bartlett there is nodding away and, but anyway, that's really helpful information. That isn't, you know, uh, across the board, that's a very specific job. And we may look like we're saving money by not, you know, paying more, but it may be costing us three times as much. So, tho- those are considerations I think we, we need to be thinking about.
So, I will, I will close by saying, this is the time of year when we all need to have as much grace as we can toward Pam and our department heads cause they've, they've really been grinding it off, trying to get, trying to get this done in a, in a pretty timely manner, and, and, and they went through all with a, some with a grumble and some with a smile through the peer review process of their budget, which was new and unexpected. And, uh, I'm very pleased with, with where they got, and now, uh, I'm gonna get my really sharp, paramedic scissors out and start cutting.
Ooh, hurt. Well, thank you. Thank you for thawing out our, our police officers.
Okay, do we have any public comment on that? Okay, there being none, uh, this meeting is adjourned.
Nope.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Executive session.
Oh, I can, I'm sorry, yeah. It is six fifty and pursuant to Texas Government Section Code, uh, five-five-one-point-oh-eight-seven, uh, we will, uh, be an executive session and the time is six fifty. Seven-twenty-seven and, uh, pursuant, we're returning from executive session and, uh, pursuant to code section five-five-one-point-zero-eight-seven, there was no action. This meeting is adjourned. God bless the great city of Nacogdoches, Texas.